All right, well, let's get started. This is an administrative work session. I am happy to be joined by Mr. Stanley, Mr. Hens, GM and production manager at Kane Park. And also, I'd like to thank Councilman Anthony Maddox, the chair of our Public Relations and Recreation Committee of Council. We are here to discuss all things Kane Park. I think that this is an opportunity for us to work through some ideas and also provide a bit of information to the people of Cleveland Heights who can watch this live. We're streaming live right now or watch online later at our YouTube channel. Looking forward to this conversation. You know what? I think maybe for the start, if you would maybe just give a brief introduction of yourselves, sort of not your full resume or anything like that, but just a bit of background, just so people know who they're talking to.
Okay, I'm Scott Stanley. I come from a background of audio. I was a touring front of house audio person for probably fifteen, twenty years or so. I've run a bunch of venues. I've worked with numerous tours, different, everything from jazz to electronic music. And just I've worked hand in hand with a lot of sound companies and a lot of things like that. That's kind of where my background comes from.
Well, I will say, Mr. Stanley, you joined us last year in 2024. And I think, based on what I've seen, I appreciate your addition to the team. So thank you for being part of Team Cleveland Heights. And I know that your experience and background has already paid off dividends in these planned improvements to the park. We are moving in the right direction. So I want to thank you for being a part of the team. And Ian.
So my name is Ian Hens. I'm the general manager at Kane Park. I was talking to Councilman Maddox earlier. I started in oh four at the park as the facilities guy, taking out the trash and doing all the things because you love the park. And I've done a couple of different tours of duty there in between my time at Cleveland State and Ohio University and Ohio State. I've seen a lot in the realm of operations, which is primarily my background. But also ensemble theater. So that was a passion for me. Some might say I'm married to that. My wife, Celeste runs it. So I have a deep relationship with the arts community in Cleveland Heights, especially because of that. And this community really put its arms around me. I mean, I grew up in Columbus and I'm here because Celeste brought me here. But this is my home and has been for over twenty, well, twenty-five years now. So it's great. It's wonderful. And when this position opened up, it's really a dream job for me, right? Like, there are very few places that I would say that is, if I could ever work there in that capacity, that would be what I would want to do. That's Kane Park for me. So I think it's a unique, you know, I came here because Kane Park has such a unique ability to change people's lives and to bring people together and to remind us about being human, right? Which is what the arts are supposed to do.
Absolutely.
And Kane Park has profound impacts on so many people, including myself. And I would, I'd like to echo, you know, bringing Mr. Stanley on has been just a boon for us. And thank you, Mayor, for working it out so we could have that position, a full-time position. This is the first time we've had two full-time people working at Kane Park in this kind of a capacity ever. And it's really made a huge difference. And we are just extremely lucky to have Scott, who grew up in Solon, so he's also an area guy.
It's so nice to come back and be able to bring all the things I've learned out on the road back here and be here. And, you know, especially, we've talked a lot about just the community and the opportunities that I wish I would have had when I was here, especially in production. It was a lot of, you have to move to LA, you have to move to Nashville. But like, we're sitting here with technology that is current in a place that we can teach that, that like, we now have that here in our home, which is amazing. That's a huge thing since my time growing up around here.
And you know, I'll tell you, Mr. Hens, you joined as well relatively recently. And I want to thank you for that as well because, you know, what we've seen, I think, over the years at Kane Park is that the city has pulled back. Like, the city government as a whole has pulled back in investment in Kane Park, in attention to Kane Park. And we left a lot of holes over the years and deferred maintenance and a lack of real investment in the facilities, not just the facilities though, but also the way that we do the work there. And I think that the city has seen, like, the city residents have seen that the experience of Kane Park has suffered as a result of that. And one of the things that I was dedicated to was reinvesting in Kane Park, recommitting to the gem that it is. It is a very, very unique thing. And I want to thank you for being a part of that because you coming on board and being on board with this new effort to really professionalize and treat it like the important asset that it is in Cleveland Heights has been, I wouldn't be able to do any of this without the work that you've been doing as well. And so I want to extend my appreciation to you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an honor. It really is, you know? It's a calling. We were talking about it, you know? It's a calling.
Mr. Maddox, I want to hear about your, you know, your thoughts on your connection to, because I know you worked basically in doing some of the maintenance back in the parks back in the day.
We were talking, Suzanne allowed me the opportunity to start just a little bit before I turned thirteen, working in the chore program. But coming out of that, there was an opportunity in public properties. And so being able to do that work took us squarely into Kane Park, preparing not just for the concerts, but for the art festival and any events that were going through there, from the grass cutting and putting up the fences and really seeing the operations and doing some of the maintenance of that. And we were sharing that, that I don't think the residents all the time see some of those small pieces that make everything work and those behind the scenes folks that are working even when the weather isn't right, even when it's pouring rain down, they're making things happen. And so seeing that investment and seeing Kane Park come alive and seeing the goals, I'm really excited about that because you get to see that transformation. We've always had some great, great employees, some great staff working at the city. But being able to empower them with the right tools, the right equipment, upgraded equipment, I think goes a long way in terms of what they can do for the residents and what they can do in terms of for the city as a whole. And so I'm really, really excited to see that transformation from when I was young and some of the things that we weren't able to do, some of the equipment that we've had in place for years. And now to see some of the acts that we can bring in now because of how we've invested is just great. It's just great.
All right, well, I know you guys have sort of a PowerPoint presentation that provides some information. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your lead on that as we work through that deck. Is it okay for us to sort of jump in with questions or thoughts or anything like that as we go through it?
Yeah, I love the conversational tone, right? Like, it's great.
All right.
And this is really just kind of a Scott's words to try to communicate how successful we really think we've been. And I think we had a great season. And that's not to say that there haven't been, you know, groundwork laid in previous years, right? But I think that we really made a major jump. And I think, I think we're gonna kind of see that. And that's what we're about ready to look at.
Well, you know what? And I want to clarify something too. I know that the, like, the last GM was a dedicated Kane Park lover, somebody who put her blood, sweat and tears into that place. And I know that there have been people throughout the decades who have worked so hard to make that place come alive every season, to sacrifice a part of themselves into that place. And when I talk about the city not investing, when I talk about there being a decline in certain respects, I want to make it clear, I'm not talking about those people who work their asses off to pull off seasons, sometimes in really, really difficult situations. But I am talking about sort of, you know, the City Hall side of things where, when we should be discussing how to bring Kane Park into, you know, let's say, the nineties, back in the nineties, you know? That's the kind of work that wasn't done over here in this building at City Hall. And that's the kind of work that, you know, I think, you add the effort, the historic effort at Kane Park, you start moving in a direction of really professionalizing and thinking about those full-time positions that are working for Kane Park, to improve Kane Park the entire time, to prepare for a season before we get there. And then you add that to a willingness and a commitment to investing in something that makes Cleveland Heights special over here in City Hall. I think we can do wonderful things. And so what I'm talking about is sometimes for really good reasons, sometimes for maybe just neglect generally or a sense of detachment from Kane Park. The government has not been a proper steward of that gem in our community. And so that's where we fell down on the job, I think. And so we're playing a little bit of catch-up here. But I think we'll get there. So I just wanted to clarify who I was talking to.
No, and that's what I've always kind of gotten in our conversations. And I think it's great. I mean, I think that really it's about the resources, right? And the tools, as you put it. That's really gonna be kind of the general theme we're gonna see, I think, a lot of, right? I think that's the general theme. And I think we're on that path. And I think it's wonderful with the ARPA, the ARPA funding and all of the stuff that we've gotten and the new equipment that's coming in for production, the upgrading of the administration and the backstage buildings there and the Wi-Fi addition. And, you know, we had talked even earlier about that's gonna allow us to potentially go cashless at Kane Park, which is something that we've needed to do in a long time too. So all of these infrastructure, I think that's the thing that people don't really understand is how hard that infrastructure is. It's like a street or like a sewer. Or you have to have the infrastructure in place in order to make some of the changes and upgrades that we need.
And a little foundation, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we've had that support now and it's made a difference in the year that Scott and I have been.
It's changed from survival to growth.
Yes.
And that's great. That's where we need to be.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, let's see, let's see what we got. What's the first slide?
Well, the first slide, this was our summer programming. And I think the key to the show here is that, you know, where a lot of people might think that, you know, big rock and roll Evans concerts is all we do. It's such a small portion of what we actually do. We put on a lot of theater, a lot of free local music, a lot of art, dance, ballet, in addition to all of that.
It looks like the, so the big concerts are less than 20% of what we do at Kane.
Absolutely.
The theater events are almost 50.
Yep.
And you add the free local music that we provide there. That's, we're getting to almost 70% there, looking like?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's great because you see the art gallery events there in the green. With this new kind of partnership that we're working well with Cleveland Institute of Art, which is amazing, that's gonna grow, right? Like, all of these things, and you'll see it in some of the slides and it'll be a theme, all of this is growing, you know? And it's kind of a holistic approach to it, right? Like, yes, everybody thinks of Kane Park as these concerts, right? That we go to, whether it's George Benson or, you know, Lettuce in past seasons or My Morning Jacket and Trombone Shorty in last year. Like, but really, we serve so many people in this community and the region with all kinds of arts and culture. It's not just those big things. And that's kind of what this shows, I think.
I was gonna ask about the art gallery events and if there was an opportunity for expansion in terms of the current infrastructure that we have there and what that looks like. Because I know it's such a drive. It's always amazing when you see, I mean, the community is jam-packed and folks come from all over the place.
With the Arts Festival.
Well, so that's even, yeah, so the Arts Festival is even bigger, right? Like, that's your, that's gonna be, that's just the art gallery events that we have.
And that's literally only art gallery opening events. That's like when we had food and. That's not even them being open.
Oh, wow.
This is just the events that we do for the opening of a new.
Just a number, pure from a pure numbers standpoint.
Wow, that's awesome.
And speaking of numbers.
All right, here we go.
This is our total attendance from 2023 to 2024. And you can see that tickets sold in the Evans grew, tickets sold in the Alma grew, total attendance at Art Fest grew, and total free events really grew. Like, the attendance for free events was almost 1,500 people more this.
And that really.
And that's in one year.
And that really has a lot to do with our partnership with Local Four, the Musicians Union. And we just had a call with them yesterday. You know, that partnership is strong and it's, you know, we're looking to expand it. And I mean, what that really does in Local Four is really your local musicians, your folks that live here in our community and that work at, maybe they work as adjuncts at a college or university, but they're musicians, they're professional musicians. Some of them work for the orchestra, some of them, you know, are out on their own. But they're part of this musicians' union and we're able to bring them in to do chamber music, to do jazz concerts, to do all of these things that really round out and fulfill what that fine arts component of live music is, right?
Is this something that's fairly new, the relationship in terms of this way?
Well, so the previous general manager was the one that really started this, so Erin Cameron. And there's a lot of wonderful work that Erin did and I want to make sure, you know, as a mentor to me, you know, that I acknowledge that. Like, she really helped to cultivate that relationship and it's paid dividends, you know, immensely for us. So it's, I would say, maybe in the last 10 years, I guess, it's been, it's been something and it's steadily grown over time. And just kind of figuring out what works best, right? Like, so this, last year, we did Tuesday concerts. And by keeping them on a Tuesday, it was easier. But also, you're seeing this benefit of this, benefit of doing these large events that are bringing more people into the Evans, exposing people to the park. And then we're getting return, right? People coming back. We're getting these patrons coming back to the free concerts. They're coming back to the Arts Festival.
They're learning about this at the paid concerts and then realizing they can come back on Tuesday and get some wine and see an art gallery open.
Because what is the number one thing we heard, Scott, all year from people that came to see shows?
I didn't know this place existed.
Oh, yeah.
These are people that live in Cleveland Heights, right? They're like, I didn't even know this place was here, right? Like, and so that's, that's what's so exciting and encouraging is like, this is just the beginning of that growth.
Right.
This is exciting for me because as I'm looking at the impact on the park, I'm thinking about the impact in the neighborhoods and the businesses around it and the growth this has been driving as.
We have numbers that support that too, actually, from some of the businesses. We know on our big shows that local businesses were doing better business.
Awesome.
Yeah, we like, we've heard some, you told me.
Yeah, Bottle House, Bottle House in particular reached out and said, "Hey, can you do more natural acts?" Because on the natural act, like, we double our business. And that's, you know, and that is a literal doubling of the business. I mean, that is a profound change in the community. As somebody who lives in the neighborhood, I appreciate it, right? Because also, we're talking about property taxes and we're talking about stabilizing the neighborhood, right? And how Kane Park can help stabilize that neighborhood and help bring people in. Now with the Tater Tutor project, I mean, it's all part of this whole corridor now that's linking Lee Road to Taylor, right? Through the park, you know? And people are coming like, wow, this is really cool. I've never, it's easier to get into the Blossom. Wow, it's really an intimate venue and the concert's amazing. And the energy was just really vibrant all summer long. And I think the excitement about the development on Taylor is there too. It's palpable. Like, you can tell, you can see how all of this is starting to fit together from a, from a planning position. This is so exciting to be part of.
Well, you know, it's funny, there's another nearby resident, Alex Pesta, who, to me at least, coined a term, you know, I hadn't heard it before. He called it paralytic nostalgia, right? And like, he's a big Kane Park supporter. And one of the things that occurred to me is that maybe part of the reason for this lack of investment in the place is that. People are afraid of change. People are afraid of change so much that they're afraid of growth.
Yeah.
They're afraid of positive change. And, you know, they don't, they don't want to risk that, you know? So they will allow something to decay before they will accede to the change that will keep it thriving. We don't, we don't want survival.
Yeah.
We want to, we want to thrive, we want to grow, we want to build it and we want it to be relevant for the next, you know? How long has it been so far?
It'll be the 88 season, yeah.
The next 80 years. We want, we want it to grow and be relevant.
Right, it's been here longer than any of us. And we hope it'll be here longer than any of us.
Right.
Yeah, and you know, things change, right? Like, so we were talking the other day about some of the historical Kane Park stuff. And there was a Tony Dow from Leave It To Beaver, right? He performed on the Kane Park stage, right? And how Holbrooks performed. When Kane Park was originally created, that was, you know, that was the idea, it was a theatrical venue that put on these huge summer seasons that had 3,000 people come.
Massive production.
Yeah, Kane Park itself, the Evans Amphitheater is for 3,000 people. I mean, that's the size of it. Well, the world has changed. That, that sort of Tony Dow on Kane Park stage doesn't exist anymore. Those people go to Broadway and that's it. Like, there's no regional tour of those celebrities. But it turns out Trombone Shorty does still do that, right? And so really, it's from an entertainment component. We're not really changing all that much.
It's just the genre changed.
Yeah, the genre and the way you look at it change, right? Because you still want to activate that space. Why was that space that size? It was built that size for a reason, ostensibly at some point. And I think we figured out why now, right? Like, I think we figured out a corollary that can activate it in a similar way, not the same, but a similar way, you know, to how it was in the past and all of the benefits that the surrounding community then can derive from that. All those people that come into the community to see it.
You've got my brain going crazy trying to figure out how to maximize this growth and even do some cross promotions with the surrounding business districts in the area.
Absolutely.
For certain things that really drive that from both directions and really give them a sense of spend the night with us, you know? Spend that, that, this night out or this weekend out in the Heights and being able to see this and surrounding my whole evening around events at Kane Park and branching out is just awesome. So I think there's a huge opportunity for that in terms of that cross-marketing side. You're gonna keep me up tonight.
Well, then I'll tell you one more, one more quick little fun fact. So the American for the Arts, right? They're an advocacy group for arts and governmental funding. Thirty-five dollars of each ticket, right? So you got your ticket price and that's separate. But on top of that, there's an additional $35 for each ticket that gets spent in the direct community surrounding the venue, right? So we had, and we'll get to this, you know, so for example, there's 20,355 tickets sold in the Evans Amphitheater. So there was an additional economic benefit on top of that for the surrounding.
See, now I gotta do the.
Community, I don't really, yeah, I can do the math, right? And then, and then there's also some other calculations that they utilize, you know, that are fairly high level, but you can look at, that will say for every, you know, so $2 million roughly was the investment that we put into Kane Park this year.
That's $700,000.
Yeah, the total return would be about $3 million in benefit, right, for the whole community. An additional million on top of that $2 million that we put in just coming from, and that doesn't even factor into the 30 to 50 people that we hire that are also paying taxes, that are paying payroll taxes, that are working here, that are spending money when they go to Dave's to buy their lunch, that are, that are going out afterwards or the holiday dinners that we're taking our staffs out to, you know? And that, that connection of community that happens in the arts, you know? And so we could get pretty far down that rabbit hole. I don't want to go, but that's kind of the high-level, high-level look at it and benefit that we have.
I see a huge opportunity in terms of where I'm sitting and what we can do to help promote this and help bring some organizations together in the business districts. Because I'm thinking, I'm out dating my wife and when I get up and I'm leaving the table, you're not just giving me my receipt, but you're sliding me over information for this next show.
Absolutely, I love that.
I'm thinking about constantly, you know, what's next? I'm thinking about the show that's happening in an hour and maybe I didn't know. And now I'm at a restaurant and now we have something to do because I'm seeing this promotion someplace else. And so, oh, you're gonna have me up.
Well, good, good. I mean, and just to kind of, kind of, kind of hit back on these numbers real quick. So we have the blue and the Evans Amphitheater stuff, but I think the things that are really important is we look at the orange and we've sold more tickets to what's going on the Alma. Now, that expansion of programming is really key and a passion for me. So what we did last year was we did two musicals, we did two plays and we did a youth production, right? The youth theater came back for the first time in probably 20, 30 years at Kane Park. And that, no barrier. So it does not cost you to participate as a kid. You just have to show up and commit to being in the production. Well, Rachel Zeg, who is running that force right now, is just phenomenal. She's an amazing person. She's also on the board at Tabama. So she's got those connections. She's worked at Playmakers and she's really passionate about that and she's amazing. And Joanna May Hunkins, who also are culling in now, I should say. I've known Joanna for a while. Joanna, you know, is artistic director for Musical Theater and she's.
She graduated.
Yeah, she does amazing work too, right? And then Janine Gaskin, who we're bringing on to do plays, she directed a play last year. She graduated from Heights.
Yeah.
Right, you know, Janine? Yeah, she's amazing. I love her too.
Nice talent.
So now all of a sudden, check this out. So now all of a sudden, we've got, we've got the Kane Park Theater run by these three brilliant women, right? That are, that are gonna shape the arts and culture of Cleveland Theater for a decade or more, right?
And this is, this is the kind of thing that, you know, bringing back the youth too. That was one of the core reasons why they created this place in the first place.
Absolutely.
And so I really appreciate bringing that back and recommitting to the mission of including the youth in that programming and setting us up for something like theater, you know, the advent of television and now, you know, the fact that I can watch a season of something on my phone, you know, makes it more difficult. We've got so many entertainment choices.
Yeah.
And as a public entity, as an entity that is committed to artistic endeavor and its impact on us, we can't just let sort of the market decide. We have to support good art. And so I, thank you for pursuing that. That's wonderful. And I, and I want to extend my thanks to them as well for participating.
Yeah, they're amazing people and I'm sure you'll get to see them because they work really hard. I, you know, I think that audience development is what we're really talking about here, right? Like, not to get too master's degree, right? I don't want to get into, but that's really what we're talking about. If we're talking about arts and cultural management from a perspective that comes from kind of that business background, right? Which, which was developed, that curriculum is developed out of, out of your business school. Audience development is key and has been something that has lacked at Kane Park for a while.
Yeah.
Right, that diversifying of the audience, diversity in attendance, diversity in type of art that is presented. And then the welcoming and opening up of people and asking them to participate.
Yeah.
Right, sounds kind of like democracy a little bit.[1629.27] Right? But that's really what, that's what we're seeing here, right? We're seeing this growth and that growth is a direct result of audience development. It's a conscious, um, maybe what was the word? I was, intentional maybe is a better word. It's an intentional pathway that we're pursuing to grow the community of people that come to, to Kane Park for arts.
Something occurs to me, like, you know, kids love to, you know, play a game of baseball or something like that, right? But what was the real reason why the Little League started? The real reason why the Little League started was at least in part because uh professional baseball franchises. Wanted to develop an audience. They knew that not all of those Little League, you know, kids were gonna get into the major leagues or anything like that. But you teach them to play, you give them an enjoyable time, and they might be sports fans when they grow up, right? And, and I think it's a similar concept when we engage kids in the arts and it's music, that's theater, that's dance. You know, and, and, and other forms of the visual arts as well, um, or, or writing, poetry, you know, all of these things. When you engage them in that and you provide them with a time that enhances their lives growing up. They may be more likely to hold on to that cultural value as an adult. And be an attendee, even if they're not a musician anymore. You know, they might be more likely to attend that chamber music concert because they played cello when they were a kid, you know? They, they don't, they don't pick up the cello so much anymore, but they're, they still love it.
They appreciate it. Absolutely. And, and I think it also gives you all those intangibles is, is, is especially in education. And Scott will talk about that here in a little bit too, about training that we're gonna be able to do now with a lot of the equipment. But it gives these kids the ability to have confidence. It gives them the ability to have self-worth and value. These are things we can't quantify in dollars, right? We talk a lot about dollars in our world and we talk a lot about what, what it is that we're spending on things and what's the ROI of it. But I can tell you that when you see a kid go in and they participate in, in a theater program. And they are nervous to stand in front of people and then by the end they're loving performing and being around people. That growth is so important for our community, right? Giving them that, that confidence and to be who they are. And then the fact that the city is the one providing that to them allows them to understand the relationship to their government can be positive. The relationship to their government can be something that they can participate in, in a democratic way, right? And, and I think that's just, that's my, one of my favorite things to see, right? Like, that's kind of the thing I love to see the most is when we have these kids and they, they perform and it's just like, wow, how far they've come.
How to swim over at Dennison and back then you couldn't just take the class. There was an end of summer performance. Dressed me as Winnie the Pooh and threw me on. But I swim until this day because of Cleveland Heights and that darn Winnie the Pooh. Just some things, but it was so engaging. I'll remember it the rest of my life. Those programs make a huge, huge difference. This is the first time I'd ever been in part of a production. They brought out lights around the pool and music and everything. And it was like, wow, this is something. And they brought some of that stuff over from Kane Park. And so being able to see that connection uh was just amazing, was amazing. And my first trip to Kane Park was directly after that performance because of that. And I didn't know any of that was there. And so it absolutely opens up huge opportunities for exposure for you.
Well, I'll tell you, I, I, so I technically, I was born in Cleveland Heights, but I didn't grow up in Cleveland Heights. But I, I do remember when I, I grew up in East Cleveland. I spent my childhood in East Cleveland and, and I remember I was sort of a kid extra in a production of Carmen Jones. Over at East Cleveland, uh, East Cleveland Theater. Some of this little kid running around. And that, that, that has, again, that stuck with me. And, you know, I have absolutely no talent or skill in pretty much any artistic endeavor. But the love for it and the appreciation of it still exists in part as a result of those experiences. But I, I, we're, we're all over the place. Let's, let's.
Let's move to the next slide.
These, these are just some numbers, right? This is just our ticket sales in the Evans last year compared to twenty twenty-three. The green is last year, the blues are the year before. So as you can see substantially, you know, we, we've done better ticket sales numbers.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, so this, you know, the Boney James and Leila Hathaway concert would have been three, right, on that? And that was twenty twenty-three, which was a great show. You know, My Morning Jacket obviously set a, a modern attendance record for us at twenty-seven hundred. That was amazing show. Um, but I think you go all the way down to Samara Joy, right? Like, a Grammy Award winning trend is talent, you know? Jazz, for jazz to sell.
For jazz to be on the top ten right here is crazy.
That's the first thing I noticed.
You know, and so I think, I think it's just, and you also see the, just the diversity of the acts, right? Like, there's just not, it's all the same. These are all, we're bringing different people in. These are not the same people coming back to the same show. There probably is a crossover, but like. There are people that like Samara Joy that probably would come through My Morning Jacket and, and, and vice versa, right? Like.
And the residents are noticing that as well, um, that they're all coming for different reasons, even neighbors are talking, you know? And it, it's, it's cool to see someone go to a show that maybe I wouldn't go to, but then next week I'm telling them about where I'm headed. So it's great to see that and drive that, those new traffic and faces up.
Yeah, so this one's ticket sales, the, the next one just represents the dollar values attached to those ticket sales. Obviously, tickets, the, the, the names change a little because certain tickets are more expensive than others, so like certain shows. But a- again, you know, mostly the higher grossing um comes from this last season.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it, and it's, it's borne out by sort of the, the general uh concept that the community has. About last year's season. People are really impressed by what you accomplished over there.
Yeah, well, this one tells a big story too. This is basically per show, the difference between one year from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. That's a, an average of what we were bringing in per show. And that number jumps substantially in one year.
And I mean, this is, you know, these are the metrics we have, right? Like, on some level, these are the metrics we have to be able to tell people like things or not, right? They, they, they in a way voted here with their pocketbooks and, and I think, you know, this is, this shows that we're headed in the right direction for sure.
Yeah. Now, I, I do wanna, I, I wanna not, not exactly provide some caution in the conversation or anything like that. But I, I do wanna point out, uh, for one, this is not a business. This is a, a public entity. It is a part of the city government. We have a uh sort of a responsibility and um dedication to providing a service. To the people as a public entity. However, uh, we, we sometimes think of it, because of the activity, we think of it uh like it's a business. And we, we sort of, it's hard not to view it in, in those terms. And I just wanna remind people that, you know, most businesses, even if they eventually become very, very profitable. Much of the time, when they are starting a process, they, they begin with an investment and they are working toward profitability. Now, I know that Kane Park has been in existence for eighty years. We're not new, but in this, I think in this current era, where we are sort of trying to reinvent Kane Park. We're trying to reestablish Kane Park and, and provide some more professional, specific, um, you know, uh, capacity. And skill to, to, to Kane Park, we are sort of starting anew. And, and this, this, this uh figure here going from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four season. Is a fantastic amount of growth. But I, I wanna remind people that we are still at the beginning of a process. That, uh, you know, we, we need to keep investing in order to continue realizing this kind of growth uh in the future.
Well, and actually playing off of that, we, we talk about concessions. Last year was the first year we took over concessions internally. We need things for concessions to do it internally, walk-in coolers, you know, just the amenities to run a concession stand that's never been provided to us. But in taking over the concessions, you can see the difference of revenue that we've done.
So that, yeah, you know what? This is, this is a similar situation. So one of the other priorities that I had, from the many priorities, there are a million of them. That I had when I joined the administration was this longstanding reliance that we had for a while. And it had been increasing in recent years on outsourcing our building and permitting functions, right? Uh, so we were working with the company, we needed to because we had to have those functions in place, right? And, and so we were working with the company, um, but when you're working with the company, you are adding their needs for profit. You're adding their needs for, you know, in order to achieve those same services. And we have been able to begin the process of re-insourcing. Uh, our building and permitting funct- functions. And I think, you know, based on the, the, the models that we're looking at, based on, um, you know, past activities. And our, our expected, you know, future activities, we will see a similar shift. And it's the exact same concept here. There are really good reasons for us to bring that back in-house. There are good reasons uh with regard to not just the revenue side, but also sort of um a control and a public. Uh, responsibility side of it. It, it, and, but this is phenomenal.
Right, well, when you think about the gap that's missing, that went in someone else's pocket, not ours.
Exactly, exactly. So this, this goes back, so the financial benefit to the community comes back to the community. Instead of being sort of extracted from the community.
Absolutely. And, and, and like you said, it allows us to also control the quality of service. The, 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 the things that we're selling to people, we're able to respond. Things didn't go perfectly in, in, in concessions. It was our first year doing it. There were bumps and hiccups and we know, we learned what we needed infrastructure-wise and we knew. But now we're able to say, we can change that. We can make it better now. We're, we're, we're the ones, we're the ones we're waiting for. To make it better, you know? We can do this now. And, and it's such a, it's such an empowering thing too at the same time. Yeah, the numbers are great, but being able to improve year over year in these iterative processes is just. It's, it's really important for the park's, you know, success.
Well, and so one more number, right? This is just our total gross from year to year. Still telling the same story.
So that's an extra five hundred thousand dollars. In gross revenue.
With about ten less pro- or ten less.
Yeah, so we did, they did what, twenty?
Twenty-seven.
Seven shows in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we had cut back down to sixteen or seventeen on the main stage. Yeah, and we also increased attendance by twenty-two hundred people, even though we did half as many shows.
We know, and, and, and I'll say, you know, that year, i- i- it's sort of also represents. What we're doing, this iterative process where we are trying new things because we need to try new things, you know? If we're, if we're gonna find the things that work, we can't keep doing the same exact thing over and over again and expect that we're going to get something different. We need to try new things, see if they work. If they don't, we need to fail fast if we can. And then, and then move on to the next thing and find success. And, and so twenty twenty-three is an example of trying some new things that extended season. Maybe it was too much of a strain, maybe it was too much, you know, all at once, maybe it wasn't enough, you know, uh, capacity to adjust that. And make it work.
I mean, I think we could, what we looked at and what we saw was, we saw the capacity for the events and the money that we were investing on, in those events. Wasn't returning the dividend that we wanted it to return for the community from an attendance standpoint and from a capacity standpoint of the venue. We operated the venue at eight hundred to twelve hundred people for so long because that was the available resource that was given to the facility to run at. It wasn't necessarily a, a choice, but because of the year before, right? When, when some of those resources were expanded in twenty twenty-three, we were able to say, okay, we have these expanded resources. How can we use them more efficiently to achieve the goals that we want of more people coming? And then it becomes a holistic thing where we're saying, okay, these more commercial things that we're entering into. Helps support the education. They help support. So now we're looking at the total, like, a lot of people like to segment it out and say, how much does this make and how much does this make? I like to look at it this way. Because this to me tells me, we're able to provide all of these things and we're responsibly using the resources that are given to us, right?
I had a question about the concession revenue for just that reason. I'm, I'm blown away by this number and saying this is the first year. And you're saying that this is with hiccups and some things you didn't expect. I'm, I'm wondering as you're continuing to prove this process, what the ceiling is for this. And so I guess my, my question is twofold. Do, when you say you, you see things like improvements in the process, do you see improvements in the current concession? Or do you think that there is an opportunity to expand our, our, our concessions? Or uh do you, you see an opportunity to tighten up what we?
Well, well, like cashless would make lines move faster. And that would make more, you know, that would generate more sales. You know, having more staff so that we could have another line open would then generate more, just the ability to push through. And actually, this next slide, this was our email survey. And if you know, the only, the only one star or two stars that we got on any of these categories were all based on concession lines.
They just wanted their beer faster. Yeah, that was it. Everything else was four or five. Look at, I mean, these.
About in ninety percent, four or five ratings on all three of these categories.
Likely to return, likely to recommend and overall satisfaction, right?
Okay, well, that's encouraging.
Right, and like I said, the, the main negative was concession lines.
So it's another metric, right? This is the social science part of it. This is the survey part of it where you're saying, okay, yeah, we can look at the numbers. But what are, what are also, what's the sentiment? What, what is the, the vibe, right? Like, what is the vibe that's out there? This is a great vibe to have.
I wanna talk about that too. So what, what you just mentioned was if we had additional staff. You can open up a new line.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that some of that conversation gets lost, some of that, that gets lost in, in the conversation. About whether or not we should be doing this at all. You know, some, some of it gets lost, uh, that in order to open that new line. You actually need to have somebody there to be doing the work to help that line move, right? Um, and so we have to invest in the staff to make that work. But ultimately, the investment is not just spending, it's an investment. And, and there's a.
The money spending is going into somebody's pocket who's working for the city. So now they're actually generating their own better life. And it helps us because now we're able to get people through. So it's, it's really beneficial. And I mean, for the fifteen dollars or whatever an hour that they're getting paid, they're probably making way more than that every hour for the city and for the venue.
Yeah, and, and that satisfaction survey. Changes a little bit too because anybody who was upset about the line or they didn't.
We could almost get rid of the one stars.
I, and I think it's a good point because I think that, you know, that's a resource argument about paying people. You know, it's also a resource argument for, so like, we look at the, at the sixteen concerts and how they, they grew. It's a proof of concept that we're presenting to you guys. It worked. And what we know is that we're looking at, you know, a fifteen percent return-ish, let's say, like any investor, right? Any investor out there in the world is gonna say, I'm gonna give you my money and if I get a fifteen percent return, that's great. And that's kind of how the, the industry works, right? That's the inside baseball that nobody really talks about, right? But that is what we were able to do and, and, and the, the kind of endpoint to that is the more investment we have. The larger the total budget can grow to from a, an income standpoint, a revenue standpoint, right? People wanna talk about revenue, like, that's how that works. You know, we're growing the revenue by having the, having the proof of concept and then saying, we know this is going to work. At a return of five percent to fifteen percent, right, on the, on the commercial stuff. And that's not all we do, like you said, and that's not what we necessarily wanna, but that is an important concept to grasp as to why people are like, well. Well, why are you asking for money to bring in these artists? And that's why, because you have to have it in order to bring in the revenue.
It's, it's interesting. I think another concept that people have a difficult time with. An operation like Kane Park is very unusual. There are very few municipally owned and operated venues like this. Being a public entity uh presents certain hurdles. If, if you're, if you're a private entity, there are certain things that you can do a little bit more nimbly. You are subject maybe to uh less regulation in certain ways. You know, obviously, right now, we're talking about budget a whole bunch, but budgeting is one of those things. Where uh it's not just enough to know that you've got the revenue coming in from this band, you've sold this many tickets, you know. You know, if, if um private venue X, yeah, just sold X number of tickets. And that money's in their bank account, they can go spend that money. Uh, if we haven't budgeted for it, then even though the revenue has come in, that doesn't mean that we can, can spend the money. So that, it, there are some other restrictions, I think, that we are navigating as we professionalize this operation. So that we can make sure that we are doing it in the most optimal, efficient way that a business would do it. But also with attention to all of the, the, you know, the things that a public entity would need to do in order to be compliant with everything. We need to be compliant for, and that is an, uh, an additional level of complexity. But it's something that I think we are working toward navigating.
Absolutely, we're going through it. I think it's probably the best way to put it because it is so unique. I mean, it is, it is not something that you can go to school for. Let's put it that way. It is something that you're learning on the job for sure.
Right. And, and I'll, I'll say this as well, in a business circumstance, you would, uh, when we're talking about the improvements to the park. You know, the sound system improvements, the, the rigs, the, the light, the lighting, the, 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 the screens. That will enhance audience experience, all of these things. Private business, for one, would have a real hard time recreating Kane Park. That's first of all. But then when you talk about having a venue and reinvesting, most of the time what you'd see is. Uh, a venue owner would go to a bank, some other financer and, and, and take out debt. In order to make these improvements, they probably wouldn't spend a, a chunk of cash. They would, you know, have to factor in debt service into their improvements and um price tickets accordingly. Price drinks accordingly in order to uh not only pay all of the operating costs, but then pay the debt service and then pay. You know, a profit to whoever is receiving a profit from that, uh, that endeavor. In our case, we have a bit of an easier time in, in one respect. In that, you know, we have, we have reserves that we can spend um in order to invest in our facilities. And that's something that we, you know, obviously the ARPA funding helped as well. We, we uh also are, and, and, and so we don't have to take on the interest of the debt service, which is, is helpful. But we're also working um like with the Leopardo Energy. Work and, and sort of trying to incorporate the, the energy savings and, and procurement savings. Into that debt service that we would be guaranteed to get certain benefit um from Leopardo Energy. And they're, they're backing that. And, and so that this was sort of best of both worlds here. We, we do have. And and so that this was sort of best of both worlds here. We we do have the ability to invest in this facility right now. Now, the flip side to that coin is that we've been, you know.
We're catching up, yeah.
I don't know what we were. There's there's a lot of work that needs to be done, I think, um and and having this opportunity and taking this opportunity right now when we have it. To make those investments means that ten years from now, this is gonna be a dramatically different facility than it was ten years ago.
I mean, look what you've done in a in a year.
In a year, yes.
I'm speechless.
Well, and none of these numbers really reflect on these ARPA funds, what we're gonna, you reduce in our rental fees over the next couple of years. I mean, you know, the sound system like the one we were getting would cost us almost a hundred thousand dollars a month to rent. You know, um by modern rental standards, and we don't have to do that, fortunately, you know, which is incredible.
And we end up with an asset.
Yeah, and instead of just doing what all these other venues, private venues do, make the tickets really expensive. We can keep it affordable for the community and not look at that as our only source of succeeding, you know?
You know, you you bring up an interesting point. We're gonna just hold off on that. But but you bring up an interesting point um about the equipment too, and and this is something that you brought up before. This equipment provides, the new equipment provides an opportunity to begin the process. Of expanding our ability to educate kids on how to use it.
That's one of the most exciting parts about it.
Tell me more about that idea.
Well, like like, for example, the sound system, um the company that is providing it is gonna come out here and provide training. They they have training courses throughout, you know, throughout the country. There's usually like a weekend in Vegas or Minneapolis or something like that. And what we can start doing is maybe offering, you know, that type of course on our stage. And have those reps come out here and we can get maybe maybe the high school for a weekend and it could be all high school kids and we can certify them. On this gear so that when they graduate and they go out, they can go get jobs because they know the ins and outs of these new systems that are brand new, state of the art. You know, these are what stadiums are, you know. This is what, you know, down at Huntington Bank Stadium or whatever they call it nowadays, like, these are the systems being deployed there. You know, and that gives these people leg up, not just like, oh, I got to do sound in some dive bar and now like, no, like, you're doing full production. And and we can offer that to the community and I I really, you know, I I reached out to try C and I've been reaching out to some of the local colleges.
They've got some really fantastic facilities down there, the Tommy LaBouma uh like Recording Arts program down.
And just to just to work with those students more and you provide, have them be able to come in here, I know um. I I've talked with one of the lighting designers about maybe doing a bootcamp where like we have the high school students come in and we just do a show. And we teach them how to set spotlights and we teach them how to turn on the sound system and we have, you know, maybe a high school band play. And then we set up the lights and. Do like a twenty minute concert.
Fantastic idea, because uh being on stage crew at Heights, they had equipment, it's nowhere near like this. And so you're gathering what experiences you could, and so as I was working sound doing that, I could get it. But whenever we did a performance, we were bringing in or hiring in someone else to do that extra equipment, and so you really didn't get that hands-on experience. The idea that local high school students could come and really get that and take it to another level. Um because I'm always talking to students who are telling me that that they're they're a lover, they're passionate for music, um they thought they wanted to be a performer. And then they they got this bug behind the scenes and realizing what goes into the lighting and the.
You don't even know how much behind, well, that was something I never knew, right? It's like, you're either a rock star or you're not. And like, I didn't know that, oh, I could be doing voiceovers for a TV show or like, there were so many different jobs and like. The this is a pro- this provides an opportunity to talk to professionals, you know, some of our techs, um. One of our, one of our audio guys last year, he tours with Macklemore and he's a Cleveland Heights resident. And he was just home and he just wanted to work out of here a little bit and the our crew, the things they learned from him were just priceless, like. Cause we're we're talking local Cleveland Heights kids getting to learn from a Cleveland Heights guy who's flying to Dubai five times a year to do the concerts.
That's amazing.
Yeah, and that's and that's kind of why, you know, this full-time facilities coordinator, stage production specialist position is is it would would help provide that. It would help support and, you know, the rigging support, it would help support some of the managing these, this equipment. Allowing Scott and I to make these connections and and not necessarily have to do all of the the day-to-day stuff. And then, you know, bringing in whoever this person, whether it's a woman or a man or or however they identify, they they would be. Somebody that could be a resource for these students, right, that we would have, so we're not hiring out, you know? The one of the hard things for us at the park is that, you know, because we are seasonal, people have to go find other jobs, other places. And it's hard to retain and attract talent that way. Um and that, this position kind of addresses that from a technical standpoint, technical education standpoint. And a facility standpoint, right? So this is also somebody, we're putting, we're investing all this money into the facility itself. To have another person on throughout the year that can help take care of that, that can help improve it, that can help tell us what we need and what, you know. What are the things that, you know, they would become the full-time lighting designer for the product, for the theater productions and for the the stages on the Evans. And now we're training our staff and this person is responsible for all of that, right? And this allows them to have a a an income that could support that kind of of work, right? This year-round income with with benefit.
And and what we what we hope to do is with these local four shows and like the free events, is to get our younger, greener crew running those. And have the ability, you know, maybe this person could supervise the show, but then give them the chance to do it, you know? Let them, let them run the lights for the free show and see if they can do it, you know? And then ideally, what we're doing is building our techs for the big stage next year. And for the years to come.
You're scaling up all of your.
I love it.
And your network is expanding.
Can you, can you help me understand um a little bit, maybe run through uh some of the. Sort of logistical processes that you go through to get a season up and running? So you're you're, I know that you're like, you're reaching out, you're booking shows, you know, you are uh preparing to hire seasonal employees. You are uh working through a lot of the prep work, you know, that people don't get to see, that people don't see. You know, and then the season starts and that's what people see, but how do you get from, say, January one to season opening?
Sure, so it is, it's like an iceberg.
Maybe not even January one, maybe you start.
It starts earlier, it's it's like an iceberg, right? Like, you know, it's what, it's it's a big iceberg in the season, but what happens underneath and and behind the scenes is really what lays the foundation. Right, and um so we would start, you know, I went in October down to Nashville, Taiba, which is a, which is a international expo for for booking agents, right? Like, and that's where you make your contacts and your relationships and and you're able to bring in the the some of the talent that we've been able to bring in by developing those relationships. Right, and so you you kind of start there, we're just building relationships and continuing to to keep those relationships going. So that starts all the way, really, it would start if we had the capacity, right? Like, I mean, we worked a lot this summer, so if we had the capacity, if we had these other two full-time, it allows us to to start even earlier in June, really. And things keep getting earlier and earlier, you know, there was an act we were looking at, um but we needed to to get that booked, you know, last year. Right, we need to get it booked in the fall, in September, October, and so they had to go somewhere else because we couldn't really act on that, right? That wasn't something that we could really work on. So those are kind of goals that we move forward on. But then we talk about, you know, as the season kind of winds down in October, we we're doing a shutdown, right? And we're starting to plan for the next season. Where do we put things? How do we shut things down so that it's it's available for next year and we have it in a good position?
Does gear need maintenance in the offseason? Do we need to send things out? Do we need to send out for parts?
Who who are the returning, who are the returning staff members that we think are gonna come back? Right, who are the, how do we, you know, how do we keep these seasonal folks, you know, are we, we're writing job recommendations? And we're writing college application recommendations, right, for a lot of people. And and that's really kind of where it all starts, right? And it's relationships. I mean, so much of this job is relationship. And then we start, we start the booking process, we start looking at what the calendar looks like, and so now we're talking to the artistic directors, we're talking about the theater side of things. And then we're talking to the to the dance artistic directors, because that's something we haven't also touched on. I mean, Kane Park is one of the few venues that does these dance concerts. I mean, you know, David David Shipp and Takahara and and Groundworks.
I saw the last show, oh my god.
I mean, that was thirty, yeah, thirty years, it's amazing, uh uh you know, and so, and so we talked to to to, you know, whether it's it's inlet. Or uh, you know, a contemporary, what is it? Ohio Contemporary Ballet, which used to be Verb. Yeah, you know, we were talking to them, so we're trying to book them and get them and and to into what works with their schedule. And then we're booking the Evans stage and then we're now we're talking to local four and we're saying, okay, well, we did fourteen concerts last year, do we wanna do fourteen again? So we're talking about that, all the meanwhile Scots, we're talking about, okay, what are we gonna do with the with the tech schedule? How to, when do we start to put stuff in? And then we're talking about, oh, Cleveland Institute of Art is gonna have their graduation at the park now and that's gonna be on April tenth. Okay, so what do we have to have ready for that? We have to have X, Y, and Z in place in order to do this, right? And so, okay, this is the staffing, and so now we're starting to look at how how we're gonna, you know, hire these people and how those budgets are gonna work for the year. And it's it's this full process because really, we're starting, you know, December, January to look at October. Right, what's gonna happen in October at to to at the end of the year? And and it kind of all just works is 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 one holistic thing. Um and so there's, you know. And we're getting, and we're getting, we're reading, you know, reports that have been submitted by people. We were talking to to our, you know, our box office folks, like Michelle Kit, who was amazing box office manager for us last year. Hey, what worked, what didn't work? What can we improve on? What do we need to do, you know? Oh, we know last year we needed concessions, so now we're on this working budget and I'm going through and I'm saying, what does it look like to add more concession stands? How does that actually look? What's that look like from a numbers?
Right, we're we're getting quotes on everything. I got quotes on porta potties, water dispensers, hot dog vending machines.
Right, cause you get, you get to the point where you're like, hey, is there a bathroom up here at the Colonnade? And you're like, actually, no, you gotta walk down there. We're like, hey, that might actually be cool if we have like a porta potty or a bathroom up here for people, you know what I mean, like?
I saw that increase the volume of people, that's the first thing that popped.
Yeah, and and so those, there's a lot that really goes into it and we're and we're doing the email surveys. We're taking it seriously, we're listening to what people want.
Yeah, even the bands that these people were saying they wanted, we've reached out to a lot of them. You know, whether they fit or not, or they're still alive in some cases.
Kelsey, it's gonna be hard to get Taylor Swift, let's just be honest, right?
Apparently ninety something. So not not a great fit for a summer venue.
Well, you know what, and that's that's the other piece, and this is something that I'm interested in, you know, I I've I've been learning a lot about the different sort of. Classes of venue, talking about seat numbers, theaters records. And and so we're, you know, somewhere between twenty-five and three thousand, right, twenty-five hundred, three thousand um that we can fit in there. And, you know, that's not a a a ten thousand, that's not a a a twenty thousand, it's not a, you know.
It's a specific sized act.
Specific sized act, and and so how do you, like, functionally, how do you sort of work through uh which acts fit? Which acts, and and it's sort of, either you're sort of on the upswing. Or, you know, in terms of starting a career in this kind of performance, or you're on the other side of the curve. And maybe you're winding down a career and it's not, you know, you there was a heyday and then and now you're on the other side of that. How does that, how does that work in sort of selecting?
That's like the artist development we were talking about and relationship building. Yeah, I mean, I think this last year, we 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 wanted to um go with, so so from a marketing standpoint, right? You want people to be able to recognize the people. And so you're building, you're building the institutional marketing. Kane Park is a brand. It will will begin to become more identifiable, and once that happens, it's easier to start to book some of the up-and-comers, right? Because then you're becoming more of a culture creator and that's sector, right now, we're just trying to make sure that people know we exist. So so but but that is, that's part of the factor, you're you're you're, you know, there there's certain things, there's, you know, Polestar, there's other um. Kind of, there's uh uh like streaming, uh like Spotify metrics that you're looking at for a lot of these folks. But then you also have, um you know, other venues, well, you can kind of track what these maybe bands or individual artists have done, how many tickets they've sold.
Do they do well in the region?
Do they do well in the region, and then you kind of build, you know, a a model or 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 some some would call it like. Yeah, model's probably the best way to put it, and and then you start to look at the model and you start to adjust the model and 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 make, say, hey, can it work? Is the return gonna work for this? And this person is somebody that's valuable to our community, you know? And 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 we have a little bit more more things to think about, I think, than a straight um commercial venue would. A straight commercial venue is numbers, it is what it is at the end of the day, you are either making money or you're not.
Shareholders are happier than not, like that's.
You know, we have the ability to curate a season here, which is just extremely unique, and it and we would be call ourselves a boutique shed.
Right, like Fandisa Mawazwa, Alexander Starr.
Yeah, so we had Fandisa Mawazwa, who was a, you know, South African jazz, you know, Afro-pop singer, right? Like, amazing, is she gonna make money? No, she's not, but was it one of the best concerts of the year? Absolutely, you know, and and and, you know, and I think that that's um what we're able to do at Kane Park that maybe we're not able to do so. But that's how we do it, we we do, there's a lot of data analytics that goes into it. There's a lot of um trends that we're looking at, and even now, in in the industry, there's social media trends that are starting to come in. And and some of the the roundtables at at the at the expo and and Nashville, you you know, we're starting to talk about. Well, what are, what's the social media and how they're trending, because a lot of these, a lot of these early career artists, right? They are TikTok, Instagram artists. Or television.
Why they come HBO is putting out, like, a lot of these tours, artists I don't know of, I go look at their analytics, they sell a ton of tickets. And you're like, who is this? And you're like, oh, they did, they have a song on every TV show that's on TV. So there's these different avenues that they're coming out of too.
And that's a, that's just a um a change in thinking from how a lot of this industry worked for a long time, right? Like, um and and it's something that uh is really kind of cutting edge on how booking agents and and other venues are starting to think about it. And these larger um private companies are 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 really using data analytics uh to 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 plan these seasons. And like Chapel Rome, maybe you guys have heard of Chapel Rome, like, blew up, huge, right? And 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 some of these people aren't even selling, it's not even album-based anymore, right? Social media-based, it's um, it's have you been on Saturday Night Live, it's it's have you been, you know? It's all of this other entertainment distribution that's out there that has changed so rapidly. And that we're in a good position to to kind of learn about and understand better and bring in that younger demographic, which. We didn't really do a good job at at Kane Park for a really long time. We were kind of in our singer-songwriter um demographic for for a long time, and I think we're we're trying, and we tried last year. To bring in some some younger, newer artists, right? Like, um the idea of of having a T-night at the theater, I think, is a great idea at the park, and and I think that's something we're gonna pursue. And going on and saying, who do you wanna see? Who do you guys wanna see? And Scott tells me that's probably gonna be a DJ I've never heard of, but that's okay, right? Like, that's okay, because we're starting that dialogue and we're opening that up and and, you know. So it's, I don't know if that answered the question, it's multifaceted, but it's complex.
And then then the other piece is sort of like the marketing side of things, you know, um. Communicating, trying to teach people that we're here is one thing. I know that artists themselves market themselves uh generally, but they're not trying to market Kane Park. But but we need to, and and so so what what are the the new places? What are the new uh avenues that we need to embrace? That maybe we haven't historically, that maybe we didn't have the opportunity to because they didn't exist before. To find those audiences that historically haven't come to Kane Park, at least not in recent memory, you know? Maybe that younger demographic, you know, that needs entertainment too.
I think there's a lot of brainstorming to be had on that, but you know, things like even just street teams, you know, maybe get a bunch of people that, you know. If you guys post, post from Kane Park, you know, you get a free ticket to a show if you post twenty posts or, you know? Maybe incorporating more of a, you know, some college students in that type of band, you know, there's there's a lot of ideas, I think that, you know. We'll get the chance to focus on that when we get this settled down and focus a little.
Well, I mean, it just occurred, it occurs to me, I mean, we've got, uh we got a lot of college students in Cleveland Heights who live here. You know, Case, CSU, John Carroll, um and we haven't tapped into that that market.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really, um, you know, I think it's expendable income, right? You you start to look at expendable income and what what that works typically, those ticket prices need to be lower. Which um the larger acts from that size go to a bigger venue because you're able to get more people in and 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 the ticket prices are able to stay a little bit lower. They're not necessarily as interested in the intimate. I think back of when I was that age and some of the festivals I went to that were huge and giant, you know, we're talking about Bonnaroo. Whose lineup just came out today, you know, the original Bonnaroo's that Scott and I, you know, all were able to go to when we were, you know, in our twenties. And you know, you know what I mean, like, it's just, it's a different thing, but I think that it's um. It also is important to to remember that there's so much noise out there, to cut through the noise. And in the marketing really means you have to have almost an established quantity to begin with. It is very difficult to be a uh a hitmaker in in this distributed form of marketing. That's out there right now, because who knows, like, there's some artists that get, you know, they get. And there are new tools that we're kind of learning how to use and working with, but there are some artists that are, they are Instagram. and there are new tools that we're kind of learning how to use and working with, but there are some artists that are, they are Instagram artists. And there are some artists that are Spotify artists, and there are some art, and it and it's really kind of mind-blowing to see how it really lines up that way.
Yeah.
And and so I think that the younger demographic, the college students, we have to work on engaging them and asking them to participate. That's it, participation is key, it's just like in democracy, right? Like, if you, if if we want you to come to the park, we have to say, what do you wanna see? We want you to be part of this, we want you to participate, we wanna hire you as a concession worker, we wanna hire you as a technician, you know? We we want you, we wanna know what you wanna see and 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 what's important to you, you know? And and I am a product of starting out early in my twenties, working at Kane Park, working at other venues, but I stayed in Cleveland Heights because of my experiences really working for the city and 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 in a Kane Park. And I think that's the other thing that people don't really, audience development and and how to get those early-career artists. And we provide such a crucial financial component to their lives early on.
Yeah.
From May to, you know, September, when they're off school, this is a lot of ways how people pay the rent. It's how I paid the rent for years, you know, as an early, as an early-career artist. And so we, I don't, I think people don't really understand how important Kane Park is in that ecosystem.
Yeah.
To all of the region.
And they all become ambassadors too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we had a staff, our stagehands, I mean, we were like fifty, sixty stagehands in Texas here.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that staff, those are all people who work with us, you know, that are a part of our team, that, you know, we don't see now in the off-season, but they're real. There there's hundreds of them out there, you know?
From a marketing standpoint, I'm just curious, I see something in my head, I don't know if it will be helpful or not. In some other cities, I I use Atlanta as an example, in two of their parks where they do major festivals, um I know we have our small marquee signs there at at the corner, um but they literally have a a screen there and it's rolling through um those concerts and those events, and they can see um video of some of the previous events and things. Would would something like that help, like, we just curious in terms of our investment standpoint, do you think it it would pull and draw people and let them know that through that park, there's a, there's something else bigger there? I know sometimes if people are driving by, maybe they see Kane Park, but they're not realizing what else is deep in there. So I was just curious about something that really blares, that there are events and there's entertainment um there without looking like Las Vegas, obviously. But I was just curious about what that might look like, that would help.
Oh, absolutely, I think, I think, you know, I think the equipment that's there is dated. And and I think, anyway, we've had these conversations, I think absolutely would help, you know, I think that the people's experience in the, in in the whole park, right? And and that's, and and we've talked about this a lot, Kane Park is an arts park, what does that mean for the entire park? How do we incorporate the entire, it's not just this gated-off portion that we charge admission to, right, or have free concerts in? Like, how does, how does the feel of being in an arts park?
When I was in Dallas, I walked through a park and there were these poles, and on those poles were QR codes. And I had no idea what they were, but they said click here for additional information, and what I did, it was a a program for every summer activity in that park. Straight months, so just walking through that park, I could click it, save it to my phone, and I could even add it to my calendar to remind me and send me alerts of when things were happening. I've never seen anything like that, and I don't know why, it just occurred to me um when I was there, and they didn't even really advertise it, well, at least to me, I didn't know what it was. I probably should have just went scanning the QR code. But I did it, and I and I was like, how cool is this? As I'm walking my dog through, I I get a sense of what's happening, maybe I'm I'm always there at eight AM, but I don't have a clue that this park comes alive at night, something completely different, so I'm just wondering of ways we could do that throughout all of our parks to really drive traffic back there. Um and maybe it's not a QR code, but maybe it is, it's something that just lets someone know that they're they may be in the park for something completely different. But hey, this this jewel is here, and there's a concert that you just may like, so I'm wondering about that.
Absolutely.
Did we have QR cards on the uh big, big posters?
I don't know that we did on the big posters, on the calendars.
Yeah, it's sort of the whole season, sort of, you know, blown up.
Yeah.
And one one more thing, like, you know, I'm I'm reading these contracts, and many of them have the provisions about the use of video, photography, um sound, those sorts of things. And every time I read one of those clauses, it occurs to me that if we were more able to use more footage, more, we could probably more dynamically and effectively provide, you know, you you look at a a a show, you know, we can't just advertise Kane Park and, you know, take pictures of an empty stage, right, and say, hey, come 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 on down. But having some footage, having some uh uh ability to use some of the shows that we produce there um to market the next season or the next show, or, you know, come on down to Kane Park, you can have this kind of fun time.
Yep.
I know that it's standard, I know that people wanna control the use of their their imagery with a venue, that kind of thing. But what is the experience of being able to negotiate some use?
It it should be fairly easy, actually, if, typically, what would happen is we would provide our own photographer.
Yeah.
And then they would send the proofs off to the artists, and then we would just ask for permission.
Okay.
Um and then, you know, that's at the discretion of the artist, but, you know, assuming, you know, you ask ten people and nine of them say yes, then we've got that.
Yeah, perfect, okay, I'd like to, yeah, let's let's take a look at that and and maybe sort of try to negotiate that in uh in the future as we as we move forward.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of artists are okay with it, they 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 like it as much as we like it.
And they know the audience is, you know, posting the the.
Yeah, they like that and they want that, right? Like, that that's good for them, I mean, I think, I think when we're talking about professional photography, which is what I think you're talking about, I mean, I think we just need to have that, the right person to be the photographer and the videographer to do that, and and then then I think we work with the tour specifically, and they know that. I don't think they, as long as we share with them, I don't think they're ever gonna be upset about more content in this day and age, right? Yeah.
Typically, as long as they get approval, you know, they don't want you catching them doing something stupid.
And we do, you know, and we do, it's one of the cool things that is kind of like, related to that is nugs.net, which is this jam band uh website scene, has Kane Park concerts that were recorded at Kane Park. Not video, but audio, that are now posted on nugs.net.
You can go download them and listen to them right now.
Yeah.
Morning Jackets, String Cheese, Daniel Donato, Mo, those are all available.
Yeah, so you can go listen to last year's concerts on this website.
That's fascinating.
Yeah, which is great, so.
Are the artists ever pretty open to helping to promote before they come by sending in a quick video or something we can throw in the city's social media? They're pretty good at that if we ask?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, it depends on, it depends on their organization.
Okay, yeah.
For the most part, you know, the ones that are organized have something already ready to go for that.
Okay.
There's usually a a conversation that happens internally and and one of the, one of the positions, you know, and and I know the comms department has really been working on getting things modernized too, like, you know, we we would need that um kind of marketing-assisted capacity, right? On on staff, um and it's it's a position that's in there um for next year, you know, they would be the liaison with that tour. And then, you know, I know for like, uh was it Daniel Donato would send out some web clips ahead of their time coming in and and you know, I think that's really, again, capacity, 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 capacity is the thing that really what we find is we come up against of running out of time.
Right.
And just, there's only so many hours in the day.
Well, this is the thing, it it's one of the, like, the classic, how many, you know, whatevers does it take to screw in a light bulb? The answer can't be zero. You know, at least one person's gotta be there to do the thing.
Yeah.
Um and and so that, you know, we we, but I think often, and in Cleveland Heights, especially in our recent history, we have been expected to achieve more with less for a long time. Um and 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 I think we've been working toward building, which is wonderful. And and this is no exception to that.
Well, thanks.
Great, this is great.
Now, is there, is there more that we should, or should we, I know we've been, we've been talking about this for a while, I don't want we we've got people watching, we've got people who will be watching later.
Sure.
Is there anything you wanna leave them with?
I just wanna say that I I hope that the people really understand the dedication and sacrifice that um the staff puts in.
Yeah.
At the park, you know, I think we we may get credit for how things go, but let's be honest, without a staff, nothing happens, and people love Kane Park, and that's volunteers, they love Kane Park. Staff loves Kane Park.
The tours love our staff.
Yeah.
I heard nothing but great things, even from the most difficult of tours, they had nothing but good things to say about our crew.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and and just that I love them all as human beings, uh I think they're really great people first, and they represent the city so well. And and I don't know, it's thankless job, a lot of the times, especially like, you know, the operations staff and hey, my morning jacket was great, that was twenty-seven hundred tickets, but it's a lot of trash to pick up after that show, right? Like, you know what I mean, and they were out there doing it, and and and, you know, um I think that that family and that ability to just work together and uh be part of something great is what drives them and drives us. And so that's the big, the big takeaway, I don't, you know, so so thankless, uh a lot of it, and and I want to thank them so that they know that people are, you know, they know, we we appreciate them a lot.
You guys are doing amazing work, and I don't think there's anyone watching and not seeing this numbers that that don't see what you're doing and you're investing. And that's in spite of the fact that you're still waiting on some other things to come in.
Sure.
And so I know I'm I'm leaving here, just, I I'm I'm pumped, I just am. Just to see this transformation without that investment fully, uh it's just, it's just mind-blowing to me. And uh to see the team that puts it together in all those parts, we just appreciate you guys so much, uh because this really does make a difference. It is something that that people know i- is one of those gems in our community, and keeping it alive for so long is just, it's just been awesome. But but to have you guys have that, and and not that you're just doing this job, but it's clear that it is your passion. It's clear that you believe in what you're doing and that the entire staff does, and so I I appreciate that portion as well. But this, I can tell you, I'm blown away, I don't know how I'm gonna sleep tonight. I've got so many ideas on on how we can support you guys and pull in our business districts um and and make that something that that's a a a great exchange, I think, between those bodies and really promoting that and jam-packing our business districts even um during some of these events. And I and and really, I I wanna see this beyond capacity, I would love to see that as the problem, you know? Those seats, the sessions are backed up. That's a great problem to have. And I think we're headed in that direction, um that the investment and the passion it just shows, so thank you guys so much for the work that you do.
I wanna say, one one of the things that you mentioned, sort of, the the family
Yeah.
aspect to this, you know, people who come and they volunteer their time, or they, you know, want to come back and work for Kane Park every season, um people who are just starting on that journey. I I I wanna make something else clear, you know, we don't wanna corporatize Kane Park, we wanna professionalize Kane Park. But we wanna keep that family feel too, we wanna keep that, because a a a team can be a family. And it's in its most, you know, optimal state, a team is a family, a team looks out for each other, a team cares about each other. Um a team, you know, lifts up the end of the couch when when it's starting to sag, cuz somebody can't can't hold it, you know, those sorts of things. You know, I, we don't wanna lose, we don't wanna lose. Um as we work toward creating those systems and investing in the the infrastructure and investing in full-time staff to, I I mean, frankly, make your jobs easier, which is a good thing.
Sure.
Um we don't ever wanna make people's jobs unnecessarily hard. And in this case, sort of, you know, professionalizing does not mean corporatizing.
Absolutely.
It doesn't mean that we don't care about the people who are making the things happen. It means when we professionalize, we're creating a better environment for people to achieve success in this family effort.
Yep.
Every season.
I love it, that's a great way to put it.
How about you, let let end end us off, um what are you, what are you thinking about Kane Park in the future?
Oh, I I mean, to be perfectly honest, I'm just really excited to start the new season and get the staff and start, with all this new equipment, there's just, the the future is so bright, and it's just, it's really exciting to be able to just like, the, I mean, the the sound system came out last year.
Yeah.
This is the newest of the newest of the newest, I mean, we're talking about like, this is the future of the music industry. We're a bunch of kids out here learning this stuff, we're gonna be all out there playing with it, it's gonna be fun, and it's it's gonna be a lot of I I'm just really excited for the staff, I really am, I I can't wait to like, let them see this gear. And I I couldn't imagine if I was in my twenties and somebody was like, here's the new sound system at our local venue, I'd be like, wow!
All right.
I can't wait to see it myself. It might be better when we got the church.
This is what, this is not the last conversation we're gonna have. You know, I think, I think, sort of, this uh this work session, administrative work session concept is something that I think allows us an opportunity to continue speaking directly to the public about what we're doing.
Sure.
Uh there's another thing that um over the years, the city is really insular, the city government has been really insular and and uh this is an opportunity for us to, you know, provide some information, give people a window in.
I love it, thank you for the opportunity, it's great.
No, but thank you both for for joining us.
It's good, good things to report, so it's always, you know.
Yes.
All right, well, with that, I guess, uh thanks for coming, Mr. Stanley, Mr. Hands, Councilman Addix. Appreciate your your participation, all right?
The portal, thank you guys.